Tonight for the last of our summer meetings, we have again our junior ROTC candidates from Garfield High School to lead us in the fledge.
Here. Ready, cut, go, march. Colors, halt. Freezing, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut, post, march. Colors, halt. Freezing, colors. Post to colors. Ready, two. Carry, colors. Ready, cut, post.
I'm an acting color guard, mark time. Color guard, halt. Thanks. Oh, hurt. Halt. Hi. I just want to give you, have you guys given round balls for their summer? Mr. Colain will attest that we do have boys in Garfield. But I wanted to read you quick, real quick, what happened during the summer, the event we did during the summer. This is from the commander, Ninth Coast Guard District, Cleveland, Ohio. Your peddles are Rico. Thank you and your outstanding NGRTC company for your participation in the Coast Guard, Coast Guard Cutters near Bay changed command on 25 July 2014 in Cleveland, Ohio. As I mentioned, at the ceremony, your color guard was among the finest I have ever had to pledge to witness. Their precision and military bearing matched that of seasoned Marines. Discipline they require to perform as they did cannot be overstated and will serve them well alike. Had the opportunity to speak to some of your company commanders and afterwards impressed by their poison character. I'm a strong supporter of NGRTC because so many sailors get their start to the program because their fine character helps build signed Midget Rear Admiral US Coast Guard. He's the Ninth District Commander. He did his duty.
People where they go, if I can answer a question, just from my own information, they have ribbons, bands, medals. What does all that signify?
Color guard, go ahead.
Well, peek here, she has an orange ribbon over her name tag. That means she commands academic team. I have the color guard one because I command color guard. These ropes right here, they are for drill meets, how many drill meets? We have to go to six drill meets to give one. And then, um, the ribbons are basically what we achieve in a program. And some of them are for drill and some of them just for like other things like, um, you get the promo card and stuff like that.
How long is she been in there? How many ribbons?
This'll be about thirty years by the year.
Three years. They're wonderful.
Community events, uh, lock three is coming up in September, which is Global Village Festival. We start that off. We've been doing that for the past three years, four, three years. And the first thing we do is we bring the color down for Starlet Global Village Festival. We're doing that. My allow the ribbons are community service and the best we can do. You want them more than that? If I could do that later. Okay. Go, go. Left, eight. Forward, mark.
Mr. Colain, do we want to have them stay for this? Do we want to have them stay for the?
Well, I can go. I just didn't, I didn't know.
We can switch the two things around. It's not, uh, to have them here for that? I think that would work. All right. President's prerogative tonight. I decided we're going to switch, um, the heat to communications and recognition while we have both from Garfield here. Because we have the honor of presenting a veteran's diploma to a Garfield High School, Veterans Honorary High School Diploma this evening. And no more appropriate than for them to actually be here to see this. Do you want to have them, do you want to have them come in?
They're coming in.
Okay. We'll wait to see. I just collect their breath because they didn't know I was going to make them. Just real quick, I'll let you know that Marilyn gave me a cheat sheet today. And it says that a high school diploma may be awarded to any living WWII Korean Conflict or Vietnam Conflict Veteran or to a living relative who's left a public or non-public school located in any state prior to graduation in order to serve in the Armed Forces of the United States or who left, um, due to family circumstances subsequent to the Armed Forces of the United States. And, um, our gentleman here this evening definitely meets that criteria. Would you like to come up while I read it? I would love to have you come stand with me. I'd be honored if you would. And Mr. Colain's going to come up as well. At this time, it is my great honor to present a Veterans Honorary High School Diploma to Mr. Earl Gordon Hall Jr. Veterans Honorary High School Diplomats recognize life experiences of honorably discharged veterans who are unable to complete their high school education because of services in the Armed Forces during WWII, the Korean War, or the Vietnam War. Mr. Hall began his service in the United States Army on September 14th, 1959, and received his honorable discharge on September 21st, 1961. During his service, he was an ex, he earned the expert badges for the MKM rifle and the SS carbine. On behalf of, behalf of the Agribank Board of Education, I'm presenting to Mr. Hall the Veterans Honorary High School Diploma for Garfield High School. We thank you for your service and your dedication to our country, August 25th, 2014.
This really means a lot to me. I graduated from three colleges, Abbeville, King State, and Case Western Reserve, but I never had this. And, uh, it is with an honor to receive it. I, it took me long enough to get around to it, but I have traveled so much to get where I am that I'm just glad that I can receive this. You ladies from Garfield, when I was there, uh, the cafeteria was the newest thing there. Other than that, that was it. And, uh, I'll tell you a little story about the military. When President Kennedy said that we had to go to Cuba, I was an intelligence officer. I went to Fort Meade, Maryland for intelligence school and then down to Fort Benning, Georgia. So here I was on this aircraft carrier and we were going into Cuba. We were on the landing crafts. I had all my list made out, what bourbon I wanted, what cigars. And then they called us back and we were not allowed to go in. Always I'm mad. Some of those recruits paid for that because I didn't get my bourbon and cigar. That is it and thank you very much. And the lady sitting there that presented, her father and I had a career in law enforcement. I have 38 years in law enforcement. I knew her when she was very young.
I didn't know that before we got there.
Thank you again. I really appreciate this.
I guess we all want to say thank you for your service publicly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for making us feel so welcome.
You're still welcome.
I did nothing. I recognized the name and my dad's going to be thrilled that we got to do that, so. All right. So skipping back, we're going to go back to community and score elections. Thank you for allowing us to exercise prerogatives. I thought that was pretty cool that they were, that he was from Garfield as well. Regardless, it would have been nice to have the kids here, that made it actionable. So would anyone like to start? Yes, they're welcome.
This weekend, I represented our area down at OSBA for the Resolutions Section. There's a committee that is represented by all of the areas. And I represented our area. And part of being there, I put on your, each of your seats, a wristband, standing up for public education, particularly standing up for public education in Ohio. Hopefully, we might be able to enact, Sister Botler, to maybe download a couple of placards and we'll be able to maybe at a subsequent meeting, stand before that and have it videoed, where we all say publicly, we stand up for public education in Ohio, uh, to stress to everyone, not only here, but throughout the state, that we support, uh, public education in Ohio. Cincinnati had about 10 resolutions. Half of them were accepted by the body, but they were encouraging local areas, if there are concerns that we have, to send them down, that we put in the packet, reviewed, and then at the OSBA General Session in November, they'll be, of course, either concurred with and non-concurred by the body. So that helps us in that process of, um, developing strategy, developing policy, et cetera. So, uh, I hope you wear your bands proudly as you do, other activities, uh, as board members in Akron. And also a chance to go to see the play the other night with Project Rise and to share in a couple of other activities, but I just wanted to highlight that.
I mentioned last board meeting that I didn't get a chance to expound on the Cube Summer Issues Event this past summer. And they represented, uh, it was, it was called the Brown, uh, the Brown, 60 years after Brown Board of Education, the Brown, uh, when they had the segregation and things of that nature. So they brought it all together and, uh, there were a lot of good speakers. There were a lot of things that went on. The Anne Flynn, who was the NSVA President, she came to just to see what was going on, but ended up staying for a couple of days because she was enjoying what was happening, as well as the director, Dr. Tom Gensel. And so they had a lot of good speakers. They talked a lot about equity, equity in education for all students and not just, uh, some students, but excellence, equity, and unity after 60 years and where are we going from here? What did we learn from it and how are we going to move forward? And they, they talked about, about technology, which is very important, technology in the classroom, how important it is to have, uh, different types of technology in the classroom for our kids because they're moving forward nowadays and not having just a pen and pencil like we used to have or, uh, chalkboard and things of that nature. We should talk about, uh, technology. So they talked about how important that was. There was a professor, Dr. Tyrone Howard, who was from UCLA College of Education, who did a very good job of talking about, uh, young students of color and some of the things that we have to do and how we should present to them in the classrooms because sometimes they perceive things or receive things a little different than other kids. So he talked about that. He was very, very good and very intelligent. We got a chance to talk even after that. And then there was a gentleman by the name of Jeff Maze, and this was really good. He is, um, a mentor at the school who was a teacher and he mentors all these kids and he deals with kids who have a lot of problems, a lot of issues. What he does with those kids, he chooses these individuals, look at them and see what type of talents do they have. And they have a debate team, which is fourth graders, you know, fifth graders and third graders that are on this debate team. If you go to their website, they're from, um, Renoir, Virginia, and it's just, he was a dynamic speaker. We saw videos of these kids. They were so intelligent. And these were kids who were trouble kids, kids who were on the verge of getting kicked out of elementary schools, but it was so nice to see, uh, the things that he was doing with those, those individuals. So it was very, very nice. I felt, I think everyone should have been at that one because it was a very nice conference, not just because it was in Chicago, but because of all the things that they talked about. It was just so much and so many good presenters, um, including a superintendent from Minneapolis, Minnesota, who presented on dealing with kids of color, Hispanic, uh, principal, she did a very, very good job as well. So I thought it was a very good conference and I still urge all of us when we can, and if our schedules permit, to go to these, some of these conferences because a lot of things that go on there. You learn a lot even about our system and how, and you'll be proud of the things that we do here in Akron because it's so, so nice to hear all the good things that we do and then you hear some of the other boards and some of the school districts, how this functionally are. And it always surprised me and to have also that our school system here, uh, Akron Public School System, along with University Akron and the city working together, that's unheard of in a lot of places, unheard of. Everybody's territorial, but here, we all work together for the betterment of the students. So that was great to know as well. And then I also was able to attend the orientation last week, Ninth Grade Orientation at Bochtow High School, and it was a very good orientation. The kids were very, very mannerable, which was really nice. Mrs. Gordon, principal there, did an excellent job explaining everything because there were some things that I had no idea that was going on, but I learned that night because she did a very good job. And there were a lot of parents who came up to me afterwards, said they, how they liked Ms. Gordon there. They know, they said she seemed like she's really stern but fair and she cares about the, uh, the students. So it was really nice to be there and see the kids too, smiling and happy. So I'm sure they're ready to go to school this Thursday and prepare for a new year. That's all I have.
Just a couple of things, you know, we, we were all privileged to be at the Bourbon Street Celebration of Urban League where they pay tribute to our wonderful superintendent on Saturday. It was a lovely event, but it made it even more so that he was being acknowledged for not only his commitment to our public school systems, but his understanding of how important it is to reach out beyond these, these walls into the community if we truly want to engage them. So I again say, uh, I'm very proud of the work that you do and very, very, very appreciative. I just wanted to say, um, thank you for mentioning Tyrone Hoyston and his, the play, Chin Up Chelsea. Uh, this is the second time this young man has done a very provocative piece in our community that deals with real issues that young folks can really relate to. You know, I think it's so important that we acknowledge, because there's so much, we think about our education system, I mean, he came from some very challenging, uh, situations. And to be able to take words and formulate them into something so powerful that our young folks are compelled to have a sense of hope, I mean, it's priceless. So I, I, I'm so grateful for, uh, his work. For those who are not aware, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we are commemorating 50 years of the war on poverty in this country. We have made tremendous strides, no doubt about it, but there is great works still to be done. But when I see this kind of hope emerging from the murkiness of the world in which we live in, as we see in Tyrone, it just makes me want to say, hmm, we are doing something right. Finally, I just wanted to commend state representative sites. Since on Monday, I was out at Portage Lakes with about 120 kids and their grandparents and their parents. And I mean, it was, I mean, I have never seen anything so intentionally intergenerational, learning how to fish for the first time. The work that the National Resource Department is doing, along with the food bank, who provided very nutritional food for the kids. I was a little sad at the fact that I was trying to help some young girl untangle her hook and my cell phone fell into Portage Lake. But I rebounded. I didn't get everything back. So call me if I don't have your number. It was a wonderful experience. I mean, it was so much energy and I know, again, just the exposure that our young folks get to have, that's an invaluable resource. It was purposeful for me as, uh, and because I work for a community action, a lot of what we're doing around urban agriculture and food, that people learn almost to fend for themselves, teaching people how to fish. I know there's a nice little cliche out there about they can fish for a day if you feed them, but you teach them how to fish, they can fish for a lifetime, but there is so much truth in that. And to see the level of enthusiasm that these kids had about fishing and just to take them out of just a concrete city, just for a little while, to be a part of, I hate to say one with nature, but that's what really happened. Not only were they learning, um, fishing, they, they actually saw how to clean fish, now they fry it. That's another story. We'll work on that, but it was good. But they also went to different sessions to learn about the different types of fish. And at the end, everybody got a, their very own fishing haul. I mean, I hope that work continues. Uh, I'm looking to ask them to expand this so that we can identify some of our folks over the summer who could just go and be a part of that. I'm sure, Mr. James, you're going to enjoy riding there with me because that's the kind of guy who.
I have a question. Did you bait hooks and take fish out?
I would have, but I got a little preoccupied with my phone, fell into the lake. I just, you know, you know, everything is on there. I really didn't even know where I was supposed to be today because I lost some of the schedule. So, um, anyway, it was worth every lost number, every lost gun. No, it was wonderful and I was just, I'm glad I had an opportunity to be there.
That's wonderful. I just didn't see you with the worm in your hand. I just had to ask.
Oh, I ain't too proud. Well, maybe.
All right, go up to your next.
I have a little something to say. It's hard to follow Veronica. I ran into an Akron school parent and he works in the courthouse and I spent a lot of time there. His name's Al and he works in the documents and court files department. He brought something to my attention that I'd like to bring up with the board and I don't know whether this is the venue or into executive session, about continuity of school colors. And what he got at was the junior schools, the elementaries, then into the middle schools and the high schools, there's a lot of different colors between the same cluster. And I, he brought up the fact that, you know, maybe we should explore having continuity to those colors to give the kids kind of a, work towards that high school team type of thing. I know, uh, he was from Ellett and their, Ellett High School's colors are orange and blue, kind of like Syracuse, if you know Syracuse, but I believe that the middle school or the elementary schools like green and white. So it was very different. Not that it's a big deal, but, uh, I live in the Firestone District and Case's colors are blue and white. You had Firestone High School, I don't know about Litchfield, are green and gold. So, I don't know, something I want to bring up and I think it's something that's worth exploring. Uh, on top of that, I looked through some of our personnel recommendations from the president. And usually I don't know anybody, but I regrettably saw that Stephanie Leonardi is going to be retiring or resigning from her position. I believe she was a teacher at Garfield for art and, and for anyone, and I believe that Veronica knows Stephanie because we both chatted with her at the year-end teacher celebration gala. She's a great loss and I guess I want to look into, and I won't do it here now, as to why that occurred, but, um, she didn't teach my son, but she was involved in his youth group called Young Life and she's just a real asset, a great person. There was a big expose on her in the Beacon for, I believe it was fighting, um, some kind of illness. But I just hope she comes back because people like her don't come along every day. And, uh, I hope that she just didn't get the position she was looking for. I understand that was one of the things involved. I want to look into that, but, um, I just want to hats off to, to teacher Stephanie Leonardi and I'm going to look into that a little bit further. Thank you.
Just want to talk about the opening of King School yesterday. It was, as somebody who went to King School, my daughters went to King School, it was sort of fun to go back and see a lot of people that I went to school with. You know, there were kindergarten with me that showed up yesterday and a lot of people from the neighborhood, but I'm sure like when all the other, when our other buildings open and people come back from, you know, a lot of the weeds that you haven't seen from years, come back to the old school and reminisce about the old school, it's a lot of fun. So, uh, it's, it's nice that we have, as I said, that albatross of the delay of getting that school open so we can move on to other projects. But it's a beautiful school and the architecture of the new school really pays homage to the old building. Uh, I think there was a lot of worry in the community about that and, uh, the community stepped up and it is a beautiful building outside and in. And, you know, from a community standpoint, it was, it'll be the same as it was in the old building. You can put that community in any building. I think they're going to step up to the plate for the kids in the neighborhood. So, uh, it was a fun day.
Just a note, we all left that to Mr. Tim because we all did attend that ceremony, but we know his passion about King and we've just been like stealing to do that. So, you should tell that we all had an opportunity to be there too. And it is a beautiful, uh, building and I was, you know, I was struck by the fact, I actually say I was struck by great appreciation when I saw parents walking their kids to school. It's just, but at the same token, I was saddened that that's not something that happens across the district, but it was a wonderful experience and I'm glad to have seen it. But I know we're making some corrective moves in that area across the city. I think we're being intentional about that and I'm glad about that.
Gilby was there.
I didn't see Gilby.
Gilby didn't.
Did you see Gilby?
I did.
I didn't see him either.
We have another meeting before the King Father and Son walk around, this in September?
Yes. Anyone else?
He always says we never shout out, so I'm going to shout.
David has something to add.
A couple of weeks ago, I had the honor of accepting on behalf of Summit for Kids, the board they presented Akron Public Schools, um, in terms of our partnerships in the community in support of kids. I have also wanted to report that our preliminary numbers are that we had over 18,000 people come through Summit for Kids. And the next Summit for Kids is August 15th, 2015. Mark your calendars. Yours might be a little waterlogged. The other issue is, or item, I had the honor of attending the Goodyear Wingfoot One Blimp Dedication on Saturday morning. And there were, I would, I think a couple of thousand people were actually, were actually there on hand to, uh, have that inaugural, you know, dedication flight. And a couple of our students who are in the Wheels for Education Program actually got a chance to ride the blimp. So again, thanks to the LeBron James Family Foundation for that.
I just wanted to add this one last thing. Uh, as a part of leadership, Akron, we had an opportunity to go over to the Derby, so back to Derby. To be honest, I have never done. To be honest, I have never done that before. And they actually had an opportunity to ride a car. But, man, I got so really excited. If our kids are not at least exposed to that, we, they ought to be, you know.
Do it in several schools.
Okay, so, I'm so glad, because that was, I mean, I'm going back next Tuesday just to ride one more time.
We do gravity games?
I didn't know.
And there was also some partnership with the Akron Police Department, where they'll, if you have someone who's interested at your school, and you let them know, they'll come help you build a car. Does it cost money to build a car?
I know, I saw that. More people need to know, but thank you.
My son's driving. One better than the others.
I just wish they had cameras, because I believe I beat the girl that was in line with me, but, yeah, they didn't have, they just didn't happen to have cameras.
You can win and lose by a dime.
I was up by a nose, I know.
But you lost by a foot.
Hey, don't you chime in, my friend.
Also, yesterday, I had to leave the King dedication early, because the University of Akron was having the inaugural reception for the latest group of Innovation Generation scholars. So there were over 60 new students in attendance, along with the last two group of students for Innovation Generation who are mentoring the new group. And, you know, some familiar faces there among our kids, and I think we're very proud. And actually, I asked the question of how many graduated from Akron Early College. I think eight or 10 students, and all of them had associate's degrees. So that's going to shorten their time in, you know, in college, earning their bachelor degree. So, great opportunity for those students and their family.
Thank you, everyone, for all of your attendance. And we're heading into the school year this week, and I'm sure that everyone will be in many places as well. It's one of the bright and shiny things about this board, I believe, is the involvement in the community as well as in the school. So thank you for that. Our next order of business, with no request to address the board, would be the approval of the meeting minutes from the August 11, 2014 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Walker, second by Mr. Smith. You're welcome. Any questions or concerns? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Is it Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Very much. Superintendent's recommendations.
Madam President, I have before me, I have before me for your consideration 52 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are on proper form.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Walker, second by Mr. Alexander. Any questions or comments about personnel?
I have done just, item 47 has to do with the security guards. I guess, what, what does that item mean? Like, I wish to recommend employment of all present and future.
It just means that whenever extended time is needed for them, they've already been approved by the board for the entire school year.
So not necessarily the employment of the guards, but the employment of the extended time?
Correct.
Actually, I had a follow-up on the security guards, and I'm wondering what, what training is required for the security guards?
Mr. Ramble?
They do crisis prevention intervention training. We do de-escalation techniques. When we say security guards, they're school safety team members, so they're incredibly trained to keep things from occurring. The actual physical part of it is incredibly minimal, because they do everything beforehand to make sure that those things don't become something.
I noted, I thought that I saw, maybe I'm wrong, that one guy that I think at one point was a grounds crew person or something became a security.
He works in the summer as a grounds person. He normally works during the year as a safety team person.
And that's training that Akron Public Schools gives them? It's not some outside?
Yeah, it's something that all the special ed, like the now classroom teachers do, the CPI training, it's the exact same training.
Those are the yellow coats we see at the events.
When you go into the high schools and middle schools, they have a school safety team member, yellow shirts. The ones you're thinking about are, many of them do that job at football and basketball games.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So does that translate into any number of hours, or is that just?
The training part? The training part? It's a year, it's a full-day training, then they get a half-day refresher in the course of the year. So a full day, next year they'll have a half-day training. And then we also go over de-escalation and all those other techniques.
Thank you.
Especially since she's here this evening, I wanted to definitely recognize Mrs. Rogers and her retirement, and thank her for her service. If you have never met Mrs. Rogers, she is everywhere in this community. I don't care if it's an arts event, a sports event, a volunteer event, she's everywhere.
I gotta stand up.
It's been a real pleasure working with the children. Every year, I really enjoy it, and I really enjoy the other activities that I do for that in public schools. I'm sorry my husband got sick, and I gotta kind of take care of him for a while, but when he gets better, you'll see me everywhere.
We run into each other every place. Every place that I go, she's there. So thank you so much for your time and service to us, and we wish your husband all the wellness, and you all the strength. And with that being said, before I get emotional, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Yes, with extension from item, item 52, please.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and eight resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are on proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
By Reverend Walker, second by Mr. Bravo. Questions and comments?
Yes, I have one. Item number nine. The mulch.
Yes.
And I know that we've probably looked into this before, but do we, do we ever look into, we do the mulch, do we ever look into the recycled, recycled materials, or the rubber chips, or the chipped rubber, or the things that are at, for example, like a Krogen Park or something in Fairlong, where it's a little more permanent, maybe it's a little more upfront, but a little less costly every year than the mulch, or?
The last experience we had with rubber mulch wasn't a positive one. Portage Path, before reconstructing it, had rubber mulch, and there was always an issue with VOCs coming off of it, and then infiltrating into the building. I don't know, you know, some of the other materials that are, you know, available now, but, you know, we can certainly look to that in the future. We try to go with more natural. The one issue since the closure up there, we really hadn't addressed some of the mulch business, and there are significant ones there. The actual price was going to be a lot higher, but we were reducing some of the equipment at there, because it isn't no longer used by, of course, the alternative folks. And we're just trying to make sure that where we do have some play equipment that we're leaving for community use overall, to make sure that it's safe.
What are VOCs?
Volatil organic compounds. A lot of the shredded tires, there were some issues at, I know personally, when I worked in environmental management here, we had a lot of issues with indoor air quality at the old Portage Path.
Of course, it was filthy.
Yeah, absolutely. The custodians always complain.
That was a nice way of... That you were addressing it, but that's okay. You made it plain.
Hearing done, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 12 Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are on proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alexander, second by Mr. Miller. Questions on Business Affairs? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Stay on the same theme, since we're talking safety and security here. Under number 10, I'm assuming these security guards that we're approving here, are, these are subcontracted security guards for the buildings themselves?
Yes, they actually were. That is correct. And this was an additional one added by Noah South and Mr. Rimmerler, requesting that we bring before the board for approval for this particular location.
Are these the gentlemen, instead of the door gentleman?
That is correct. Allows them to go in and make sure that the people entering the buildings are the people they're supposed to be.
I have, Tim got one of mine, so I'm going to be asking about two, six, and eight. Two has to do with the cognitive ability testing. I was just curious what that was. Is that?
Number two.
I don't know who to ask.
For the assessments for gifted identification that is part of required assessments that we provide.
I figured that's what that was.
And it also includes, our school psychologist also uses it as part of our assessment system. Number six is the approach that we have an agreement with AMHA for our students that are special ed, required life skills training, and this department allows them to learn independent living skills.
Okay.
And then you said number 10 was the same.
No, number, number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight, though, not so much issue number eight, but I brought up a question that I was just wondering if we had, had some resolution on, which was the Medicaid billing. And I know the state's been behind in the Medicaid billing, and we've been working at that for some time. And given that it looks like we're, we're working with someone on our healthcare billing for Medicaid, have we gotten any resolution from the state? Have they caught any of that funding up?
That one, I am, do you have an update on that, or maybe?
We, they are not caught up, but this, this is the regular contract with our regular provider for the ongoing billing, but we don't have full reconciliation on past reimbursements that we're supposed to get. And we're still actively working with them and waiting for those, if it's true across the state.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker? Yes, and I was praising myself that time.
You said your name every time, Chris.
Mr. Ryan Hart likes for me to tell, to make sure he doesn't miss who does the first and the second, and who does the first and the second. Yeah, I haven't caught on to it. Okay, for those playing it out. All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that I mentioned yesterday at King School. You know, I started to think about all the pieces that have to come together. We, as a board, spend a lot of time thinking about all the pieces that have to come together to educate a child. We get to see a lot of them and what they cost. We get to hear about a lot of them as we're making changes. And yesterday, we got to see some of those pieces starting to come together, including the facility, which is important. But it's not the most important part. It's just a piece. And yesterday, I called them precious pieces. And I think they are. I think each and every one of them, without them, is almost like there's a jewel missing in a crown. You don't have a complete package unless you have all the pieces. And I think that in many of our schools, and in much of the administration, we have it. But I want us to always be continuing to strive toward this. And the ones I mentioned yesterday, not only the building, but strong leadership, a talented, qualified, and caring staff. Caring has to be really high. So many of our staff go above and beyond. Those that don't should plan on stepping up or stepping off, because we want people who definitely care. And I think for the vast majority of our teachers and staff are the first ones to say that they want to be that caring piece. The next piece is involved parents. And that doesn't just mean you show up when something goes wrong. It means you're there, and you have your kids ready to go to school on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis, and provide as many of the tools that you can to make that happen. Those don't have to be monetary things. That just means putting an emphasis on school and how important it is. And getting ready for, you know, setting the clock back now, so they're going to bed 15 minutes earlier, whatever, so that you can get them back on a school schedule, and things like that. Those don't cost you anything. That's just time. Showing up for a parent-teacher conference, if at all possible, and if you can't, these technology and something as simple as your phone, you can get on hack, which is the Home Access Center. You can, right on there, you can email the teacher. It took me till last year to figure out you can do that. Right there, on hack, it'll say, "Contact the teacher." And if you have a problem with that teacher that you have a question about, you can email right through there, and it's so helpful. So taking those extra steps as a parent, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you have to be that number-one PTA selling person. It doesn't mean you have to be at everything, but it means putting that emphasis on education and how important it is. And then, the other piece that I think we really saw yesterday, and, you know, I got to tell you, I think we see it across the city more often than other schools get credit for, and that is an engaged and attentive community and neighborhood. King is special in so many ways for what they do, but there are other neighborhoods in the city that have equal involvement from their neighborhood. Some, some people don't know what they can do to help. If they don't know what they can do to help, usually I send the Carla. So if, and the board is, again, easy to access on these phones. We're the easiest board to find by comparison to our neighbors. And if you have a question, and you have a gift, and you have a talent that you want to use for Akron Public Schools, we will find a way, if at all possible, to put you to work. So those are those precious pieces to me, and I want to thank everybody who's already gotten those pieces together. As we're getting ready to start this year, I think it's going to be a great year. I'm super excited. Yes?
Madam President, I just, and one of the most important things to me, that I saw yesterday, I see at all the schools, is the faces of the kids. And I think that is the most important, because we're here working on behalf of these kids so they become educated. But when they're happy, and they come into a new school, of course, they want to come to school, they want to come to learn, which is, which is the most important thing. So I, I was just happy. I get, I kind of get excited a little bit when I talk about kids. I like them so much, and to see them happy at all these schools is really just, just great. It's great, so.
You mentioned something in your, your sharing with us about start times for schools and being aware. And there was an article in the paper that physicians are recommending that we look at that to change, possibly change that, to help our students do better in school.
You ready for that, Deb?
I know we talked about that briefly a while back. Of course, no action or anything has been taken, but that may be something we might want to consider, which would mean we might have to push the end time a little bit. But, you know, to do all we can to make sure our students are ready to learn.
My kids got very excited about that today. That was a great story. Doctor says I shouldn't go to school too. Isn't that what I told them? All right, any treasurer's report today?
Well, I guess the only thing is, this is my second and last board meeting. And I wanted to thank you. It's been a real pleasure. And I can tell you that you have an excellent staff in the treasurer's office, and I think you've made an excellent decision in the... in hiring to be your new Treasurer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Okay. Unfinished business. Superintendent has some things to share with us.
Yes, and at the last board meeting, I discussed the need for establishing three positions which are in your packet. The first one is the Digital Learning Specialist. I spoke of the need to really do more in terms of online content, to allow more online courses, and to also be competitive with some of our competition that's offering online. I think there are some opportunities there, particularly in terms of homeschool students, and also with our home instructor piece, and just to offer more electives and flexibility in scheduling. The second position, of course, is the Director of Specialty Programs. As you see at your places, we have our CASEs and IB candidate school. And not just that, along with our New Tech, our STEM schools, visual and performing arts, I think there is a lot more work to be done, you know, in terms of holding our specialty programs accountable so they remain cutting-edge, and to also look at some new programs that I think we have the opportunity to start, particularly in the medical field, and along with our dual enrollment opportunities. And finally, the last position, the Executive Director of Data and Accountability. That one is critical as our EMIS rule has changed, and data becomes even more important to our district. We had a report at the last board meeting on our report card, and how, you know, data's going to play an ever-increasing role in us, you know, being able to analyze and align all of our structures. So the data in the district supporting what happens in the classroom. And we have a lot of resources that we poured into in full services, and we need to reap some of the rewards of that. So I just wanted to, you know, re-present those. And then as we further work with Mr. Pendleton moving forward, and after the board has a finance committee meeting, you know, the other items that I brought, you know, to the board's attention last week, we will have to, you know, that we will have to address. There were some issues regarding tutors for students, instructional specialists, and training for our new curriculum adoption are important. And there is one item that's very important, of course, along with CASE and Litchfield in terms of their IB candidacy, is the cost of their professional development this year, as we learn more, you know, from the information we received last week regarding their candidacy to proceed, you know, and the next steps in the IB process.
Do you need a motion?
Actually, yes, I would, Madam President, at least to approve these three positions. And I would just caution, in the previous information that I sent, I would actually like to proceed with the IB expansion, which was the item listed at $223,631. And that's just for this year, you know, to deal with some of the training and the other issues with the CASE in Litchfield IB expansion.
I move the three positions that you have outlined, plus the IB for CASE Elementary School.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Questions and comments? Yes?
A question, David, on the IB, the cost. And you said it's a one-time for professional development. And I guess somebody can get back in touch with me. I know there's an annual license fee as well. Do you recall what that is for each school or somebody?
No, but we can get that information, because there will be, and we do the one for buyer start every year. So yes, there will be an annual fee to continue that.
Another question I have, as far as the salary range, is it just, I just thought of this in light, you know, talking about our new treasurer, you know, when we're looking at treasurer salaries, it's a flat dollar amount. And looking at, you know, 67 cents to 79 cents is, you know, sort of odd numbers. I'm sort of curious how those ranges come up on new positions. What kind of?
They're actually in our salary scale. And as the salary scale moves because of, you know, when the board extends those, or what are given teachers, and they're applied across the scale, that's where you get the little odd cents.
Okay, so these, the job code and time schedule aren't necessarily new, but the title and position is.
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Just a couple of things. I mean, I'm really excited about the IB program, and I'm really excited about what we represent as a district as it relates to STEM learning. You know, I say this time and time again, to be in Washington DC with an eighth-grade class inducting scientists into the National Hall of Fame under the leadership of Tracey Buckner, I mean, it's an amazing thing to see, to listen to those young folks articulate the way that they did, and understand that this possibly could be them. The environment was very opulent. Just to put that in their spirit, amazing. We went around to CASE and other schools to hear about the IB program. Now, it's one thing to get students excited about something, but to have teachers and administrators blazing about it, I mean, you're going to get burnt just if you just around, because that's how committed they were about it. And to have, to see that, you know how that will translate to our students. So I'm very, very excited about that. The data piece, you know, we've been talking a long time about how we need to drill down to street level. But I say this, as we do this, all I would ask is that the reporting out changes a little. I need to hear a little regularly. I don't, I want to hear three months from now what we're doing. I don't want to get it at the end of the year, or even halfway through the year, because I think this is far too important. So if we can make sure that that feedback is coming back to the board on the regular, I would be one happy camper, you know. So, but I just, just hats off, one of the things, we talk about being a world-class 21st century school, but you can't do the same thing and get to that place. And to see us evolve the way that we have, you know, I was over at STEM Middle School, it had to be about a week or two, or was it, you know, my days get kind of mixed up, where Batel was saying, you know, not, they're looking at Akron and saying, "This hub has been phenomenal in terms of helping us expand this whole STEM learning piece." And that happened in APS School District, right downtown Akron, you know. And that speaks to that, that also speaks to the kind of leadership that we're developing through our principals, academies, and other opportunities that we're affording our students. So I'm happy, so happy, and grateful for what's happening in APS. I think we're doing the right thing if we're going to try to attract students back to our district, and convince the public to keep supporting us, that we ain't doing the same old thing expecting different results.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Did you get it?
I do.
Good.
I do. Actually, I have wanted to ask, and I meant to meet with David before, but I had kind of an emergency come up. As far as, you know, I've just been on the board since January, and I know there was a lot of looking at administrative positions that were just not really contributing to the success of the school district. And we eliminated a lot of those, is my understanding. I'm not privy to that. But we're creating new positions. These, the savings we made on those administrative cuts, because we're looking here at roughly 300-plus thousand a year for these three positions. I guess I'm hopeful that some of the savings or the cutting we did for administrators that were perhaps duplicative or not needed, do you have any sense of the comparison of savings we made on some of the cuts we made before versus creating the money needed in addition to, for the new positions, if you understand what I'm asking?
It really isn't about savings. It's about slicing the pie a little differently and putting the right resources to bear on the challenges that we face. I mean, the board has charged me with really pushing the envelope in terms of our 21st century organization moving. I mean, just look at some of the things that we've done. You know, look at the SEPCO books partnership, where now I think we're up to 1,400 book titles, if I'm not mistaken, in our online library. You know, look at all the work that curriculum and instruction has been doing. You know, a lot of it, you know, in terms of the requirements from the state for online testing and the technology that we brought to bear. To have all that equipment and all those resources, you know, in our system, and still have, you know, paper book libraries is a little odd to me. And, you know, you've asked me to push the envelope, and that's really, you know, what the recommendation is all about, not so much in saving money, but it's more, I look at it more of an investment. And more is to come, because we really have continued to look at, you know, how we right-size the district, which has some opportunities for savings, you know, and looking at our building populations, which we'll be doing as schools start. And, you know, really, it's been making the adjustments, you know, as necessary to keep us moving with that vision that's been established in our district focus. So, you know, yeah, there's been a lot of different administrative jobs that have gone, but some of those savings have funded other things that we've done. And it is a, you know, a constant challenge to make sure we're putting the right resources, you know, into play to deal with some of the issues that you all have told me are important, so.
Well, and you know, I'm stepping in here in the midst of things that you've tried to implement. So I don't mean to say that I'm voting against anything that's another dollar more than positions we've cut, as much as trying to understand the whole scheme of the, of the thing. Because I understand that, especially with the gifted schools and things, that we need to attract brighter students and keep brighter students, that I think is necessary. I guess from a fiscally responsible standpoint and consciousness that if I have a feeling that we have cut some other stuff so that it's not another $300,000 in salary costs, which is our highest cost, then I'm more, more comfortable with something I think fits needed.
We have the brightest students in Ohio, brightest students at Ohio Akron Public Schools. That's right, we have keepers.
Right. I mean, even when you think conceptionally about what we're talking about, not only drilling down the data, but making it useful for each schoolhouse to use it. You know, we talk a lot about engaging the community, but it's so much about the community, we really don't really know. And I think to have the response, not only create that position to look at data, but make it so there's, so it's much more usable at the street level. And that's going to be critical for what it is, I believe, we're trying to do.
I'm sorry. I always say, I think a good example is what happened in the spring in terms of looking at our alternative programs. And, you know, when we get complaints from some staff regarding, you know, how that's done, and looking at some of the numbers, and then finding groups to handle some of those more difficult, you know, educational issues with our kids, you know, sure, there's some savings there. And then, you know, again, we look at the whole picture. I mean, as we work with the Treasurer on five-year forecast, those are things that are in our mind all the time, every six months, you know, in terms of, you know, looking at a budget, looking at how we can cut costs, and how we can be more efficient. I think if you, you know, look at the totality of it, you know, child nutrition, general fund doesn't subsidize it. We've maintained that for years. We operate a fairly efficient transportation department. We've looked at a lot of different areas, you know, on how to cut costs and make it more efficient. But when you're sitting there with huge balances on the books right now in the current five-year forecast, I think it's an opportunity for us, you know, to be responsible with that. And I think, you know, I basically have it. When you look at a 22 or 25 million balance for, projected for this year, and even going a little bit, you know, out on the edge to next year, at like 29 million, you know, we're certainly not proposing, you know, 15, 20 million, you know, in additional spending, you know, or whatever. But right now, you know, close to five, and you've already approved approximately, I think, a little over two. The rest of them will have to, you know, have a conversation on. But those are things that are always on the radar screen, you know. And we, we basically are constantly, you know, in that mode of looking at how we can save and be more efficient.
Just, I guess, historically, the makeup of this board, when we hired the present Superintendent, was very intentional in making some crucial decisions that we were not going to stay in the same mode. We did cutting. We were very frugal. We were in a really, in a deficit mode for a while, until we were able to do certain things, and we got the levy pass. We continued to cut, continued to downsize on some key area, key areas, instructional areas, and extracurricular areas. And as the Superintendent's saying now, we're looking at some positive results, where we're receiving some financial blessings, if you will. And we've got to make a decision, how do we put our district in a position that is going to be competitive with whatever's out there. And to do that, we've got to put people in place. We've got to do better in certain other areas, like marketing and PR, because we're, we're against those groups that's spent lots and lots of money to do that. So we have positioned ourselves, and this started several years back. And we told the Superintendent and the staff, we're not going to deal with certain things. One was human resources. We made some crucial changes, some, some changes that really put a lot of people on, on edge as to what we're going to do. Now we're saying, if you're not living up to, or don't expect to do certain things, then this board is saying, you've got to make a decision. As administrator, teacher, if you're not moving that direction, you've got to make a decision. Either you're with us, and the changes that are going to be competitive, being looked upon as a blessing for our community, then you've got to make a decision if you fit. So these transformations, the doors open for us to make those moves. We may save, and we have saved. I don't have dollar amounts, but over the period of time we've saved by making cuts, we've saved by being very, very appreciable in the Treasurer's Office to make sure that our budget has been balanced where we are, where we are, and hope to be in the next, you know, coming years. So now it's an opportunity to use these funds in a positive manner. At King, when I went there yesterday and yesterday, family came in. One child is in our early college, and the other child is entering in to King. So you've got savings from a family that's going to have a possibility of saving two years of college education. And you've got a child now in a high-class, very competitive environment. So we're saving, plus giving parents and students an opportunity to see that we're, we're trying to do our best to reach all of our students in every area, to make them know that Akron Public Schools is very competitive, and is offering a wide range of curriculum and choices. So to do that, we need to make some changes, which has a cost, but in the long run, it's going to be, I think, a blessing for our district.
I want to chime in in a supportive fashion, but I also want to play on a different, slightly different perspective, and just say that with all of that opportunity, I think, comes an equal amount of responsibility, which I, which I think is what Dave is suggesting to, to be fiscally responsible, to look at the positions and the additional costs that we're adding, and to be mindful of where we're at financially. And I know, to that end, I don't want you to feel like your Finance Committee isn't doing anything. You know, we've reached out to Ryan. We have a meeting set up to sit down with him and to go over this. And I know that David has been kind enough and supportive enough and understanding from our perspective to give us some of that time to sit down with Ryan, to look at the financial impact of some of, not only the requests that David has brought thus far, but the requests that are still sort of pending, that I know we need to move on, because David needs to be able to make some decisions and to operate the district. But we are looking at those, because, you know, when we first But we are looking at those because, you know, when we first got those, you know, these, some of these costs included, projected out, just very rough numbers have us deficit spending four out of five years in the next five-year forecast. We need to look at that. You know, with those opportunities comes an equal amount, I think, of responsibility to sit down and say, if we're going to make this investment, at what cost?
Well, fearless, you know, that's why that's not here. I think we all share that sentiment. We may not be on fiscal, but we are fiscally mindful of some of the things that, that we need to be looking at. But what we're talking about today is, if we're talking about closing the achievement gap, it don't do me no good if I'm holding money and people still aren't progressing. I think what we're talking about here today is the 21st century piece that everybody wants to see, all of us want to see. I think we, no doubt about it, we are equally as attentive and mindful of our fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer of this school district.
And no, and no, and I don't mean anything against that position. What I'm suggesting and, and what we are talking about today, though, are three positions that are 300,000-plus dollars in salary. And so, I mean, we're talking, we're talking about both things. And so to be respectful of both of, both of our positions, I'm just suggesting that your finance committee is, is looking at it. I hope, we're sitting down with Ryan Friday, I believe at 2 o'clock. So it's not that I'm not supportive, but I, I agree with David that I do want to continue to make sure that we're looking at these. We didn't have the opportunity, and we've been in a twilight zone for a little bit, where we've sort of been without, without Jack, but without Ryan. So unfortunately, we couldn't get to these things and, and offer another set of eyes on them before they came, but I'll get there.
And you all are, the finance committee, you do an excellent job, bring information to us, you bring any red flags, and we appreciate that greatly. And no doubt about it, as Mr. Sims was saying, and as if you remember, not long ago, we were sitting here getting advice that we may have to go into fiscal emergency. So that's not long ago. So we don't lose sight of that. We have to be responsible because that's, that's our job. And if we're not, then we run this district in the hole. It doesn't do any good to have these kind of positions or wonderful buildings or curriculum. And we're going to be in fiscal emergency, which we know the process is, if we don't have the money and we're not able to do our job, somebody else comes in and tells us. And then they choose how they're going to spend the money. We don't even have that authority or that ability. So we know just recently, not any long distance, that we have to be accountable. And we've got to make those tough decisions, and we had to make them, so that we wouldn't get, fall into that place. But now we're looking at areas where we might be. And of course, we need your expertise, your looking, fine tuning, bringing back to us and say, okay, but be mindful. We can't spin, 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 and then not be accountable to our children and not have, have the resources and the ability to do what we do. Because one of the cry is, the cry was down at, Saturday at the meeting, NSBA, we are public elected officials. Nobody can do the job that we're doing. The people have elected us. And we fight as hard as we can and tell everybody, we're not allowing anybody to come in here. It's Cleveland, it's Cincinnati, Columbus, or whatever. We've been elected by the people, so we've got to be accountable. And so we applaud you for that and encourage you to keep us accountable.
Can I say this real quick? We, we want to make sure our kids are moving toward the 21st century, and I know we are going to do that. There are some things also that we look at, you've got to look at nationwide, because we, we get hit with a lot of things a little later than a lot of other cities, especially in bigger cities. But some things are changing to move districts toward the 21st century. I'm sure that's going to come and hit us. But I am, I'm confident that Ryan, when he comes in, he's going to look at all these numbers and look at these things and say, okay, where, where can we possibly cut? Can we move some monies here? That's, that's part of his job, so he can reflect and have a good five-year forecast for us. So I think we're going to, we're going to be okay. I, I, I feel really comfortable, I really do, because I'm focused on the kids, we are focused on the money, which is important as well. But I, I just see that there are going to be some things that come down the pipe pretty soon, and we're going to probably have to change like the rest of the country and do some things slightly different than we've been doing for, for years. So we are, we, we need to make sure we're ready to get on board with that and move forward so the district can continue to move forward and our kids can be prepared. That's the most important thing, is we have those kids prepared so they can leave Accra Public Schools and be able to go right out into the public and work into the workforce, go to college, go military, whatever it may be. But that's going to be very important. But I, we're going to make it, we're going to be good.
Yeah, and I have to concur too to that. I'm delighted the fact that you guys have people eyes. And, you know, we have benefited greatly by your insights. But I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't say, as an elected official, that I'm equally attentive about and mindful of our, our obligation to be fiscally responsible.
Well, and I think that has definitely been shown. The superintendent has presented the board with many choices. We have told him, slow down just a little bit, let's make sure we get Ryan in here, and he's done that. And he's slowly presenting these and double-checking them with us and making us go through them with a fine-tooth comb, so that it's not, this is not a spending spree. This is a calculated spending of funds for necessity. This is not, this is not, you know, some wild grab for things. And I appreciate the superintendent's diligence, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to look through each of these as they come across and discuss them, figure out if they're necessary. I know, for example, several of us, when we were out this weekend, were stopped and talked to about the IB program and the excitement that there is about that. And I know that the other positions that are here are going to be equally important. And thank you for all of your diligence, all of you, and discussions as we've gotten through this.
One good thing, not to the believer's point, I'm sort of going to wedge myself right between Veronica and Andrew here.
I would do it, I would do it.
I like what I'm seeing here, but we also have to keep an eye on the future because it does us no good to bring these new positions if we can't sustain them. And that's, I think that's a lot of people.
But I think what history has shown us, money attracts money. When, when we took STEM to the world, basically, it attracted other resources. And I think if we're playing up on that level field, that's one of the natural byproducts of that too, we have to be mindful of too. So we're not living in a, in a constant state of, this is where we're at. We're thinking about all the possibilities that don't, we have not even seen, other than we've seen them through other programs like the STEM program.
I agree. And I want to say this just quick. Tim, you and Patrick, you guys are excellent. I, I trust in what you guys are going to do as well. So I wanted to make sure I said that publicly because both of you guys are very keen to knowledge me about, about numbers. With my eyes, I, I, I don't know which way the numbers are going, so I do have to trust in you guys.
Okay, I mean, I mean, I do, but.
To explain, or even Ryan can explain, but that's, but numbers do jump sometimes.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Roll call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Vambari?
Yes.
Mr. Anshfam?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
All right, and now the new business, Mr. Superintendent.
Madam President, I have before me one personnel recommendation for the filling of a position of Director of Specialty Programs and a position of Executive Director of Duty and Accountability.
Second.
All right, I think that was Patrick and Reverend Walker.
Right.
Mr. Bravo?
Patrick, Reverend Walker.
Was Mr. Bravo and Reverend Walker. Any questions or comments? I figure you're exhausted by now. All right. Or maybe that's just me. Roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Vambari?
Yes.
Mr. Anshfam?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
I don't know if either of you have anything to say.
I thought there were three.
Well, there are, but one will have to be posted.
All right, Tracy, why don't you get up and sit down? And then we'll turn it over to Howard.
Okay, well, first of all, such spirited conversation around these new positions, and I hope that you'll find as time goes on that it's a good investment within the district. This is my 16th year within the Accra Public Schools and 16th year here in the city of Accra. I can remember when I started it, Ennis, as an eighth grade language arts coach, and Karen was a huge support. And then shortly thereafter, she wrote my letter of recommendation to get into administration. And just under the, I've worked with, you know, the majority of you in here and have enjoyed it and will continue to enjoy it, but I appreciate the leadership of Superintendent James and Dr. McWilliams and Executive Director of Secondary Education, Mark Black, for having foresight and the vision that we need positions like this that Howard and I will be fulfilling. And the digital literacy, I'm a wonderful proponent of that because, as you know, with the STEM middle school, we've had digital literacy as a course that was co-created by two of our learning coaches. And now it's my charge to go out and amplify that across the district. You know, with the Ohio STEM Learning Network, there's about 13 different counties that make up the Accra Hub, the OSOL in Accra Hub. And people come from, from far away to find out what's happening. So this is an exciting opportunity to give me a chance to get out there and show the other Accra Public Schools what's happening. Many people are already doing a lot of wonderful things. Tomorrow, we'll be starting with the North Cluster Schools, Finley, and North High School. They'll go through workshops over at the Oath Center, digital literacy and smart board training. So we're off to a wonderful start. You'll hear about this probably at the next court meeting, but a grant that was received from Dominion, so that we can get a digital animation course that's surrounded around environmental sciences. And that's going to pilot at the STEM school, and then we'll move it into a couple of workshops and sites. So I'm excited, and I thank you for your vote of confidence. Thank you for your time before allowing me to speak.
Congratulations.
I simply, I haven't added up years, I think. I don't want to. So I'm excited about the next year that I'm heading into. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity of placing your trust in me so that my abilities to deliver on behalf of the students of Accra Public Schools. And I believe that in many ways, up to this point, you've been able to see a large number of the kids in the career tech program that excel and that have broad recognition in the district. And I'm looking forward to being able to look more deeply in changing the way our technology supports the education of our students. Because I do, like Tracy was talking about, having a digital learning piece and such issue we're proofing. I believe that if we don't, if we don't go after that, we certainly aren't going to make a positive contribution to our, our kids. Because right now, we've got to stop forcing them to leave their technology at our doorstep. They leave it there now, come into our classrooms, and then they go home, they pick up their technology. And our challenge right now is to change that, that whole mindset on how we educate our young people. So I hope that you see that I'm excited.
I guess you're excited.
You know, I had the privilege to kind of be around, I've seen you do everything. I've seen you cut your hand trying to knock signs into yards. I think one of them was my mother's house. But to know, to, we have people in place that will get in just where they can fit in, in order to do what's best for our district. And it didn't matter whether you had a beautiful title on your chest or not, you got in, it's that kind of passion. That's the passion we're talking about. Either you're coming with us, or, you know, do what Tim or, no, Tim didn't say that, did you? Do what Reverend Walker said, maybe somewhere else you need to go. And so we're, to have that kind of commitment, we're happy to have you. Now, I will come full of questions, because this is very, very important. And so, and I think I can, that's the sentiment of the entire board, because this is really important stuff. And we need to know what the data is saying, and whether we're not only collecting it, but using it to move us. Not, not collecting it to collect it, but, but I know you know that.
Trust me, our, our teachers will have access to the data just in time. And we will make modifications to get that done.
And just one last thought from the peanut gallery here, for me anyway, is, you know, given the spirited discussion that we had over the positions, I hope, I hope everyone, that doesn't reflect on, on you, because I have seen both of you work, and I think you're amazing, and I have every confidence in you, and I know we do as a board. I think it's important for people to understand and to see us having a dialogue, a healthy dialogue about the things our district needs versus what we can afford, and making sure that we're managing our resources. And I think that's exactly what we did here. But the two of you, I know we have every confidence, and I'm really excited to see what you do personally. So congratulations.
Comment? I should sit down, probably shouldn't make it. But the only growth in public education in the state of Ohio right now is online learning. We're late to the game, but we're going to catch up.
Good, well said.
I just want to add something real quick, since Howard mentioned the, how the kids leave their technology. And I'm going to share, my junior's going to kill me. But he had summer reading, and I've been on him since June. I stacked the books in his room and said, there they are, they're yours, go, go at it. He's going to be a junior this year, he's got to do it himself. And the last couple of days, I've been stressing, and I've been holding my tongue, and I've been not saying a word, but I've been counting the days, I'm counting hours. You've got to read Old English, buddy, this is not going to be easy. Seeing him on his phone, thinking he's goofing around, and yesterday, he's watching a movie, and I'm like, oh, for crying out loud, is he ever going to do his summer reading? Come to find out, for the three days I've seen him with his phone, he's been reading Beowulf on the phone. He was double-checking some things he wasn't quite sure he understood with some online pieces on his iPad. His summer reading is done. It was done in half the time because he had the technology thesis and what it would have taken me with the paper that I, and the way I would have done it. But he did it in his way, and it's going to probably knock it out of the park because of it. And I, so I think Howard is completely right. I've had a lesson, I got schooled in the last four days on how that's absolutely possible without even looking like he's learning. The learning that he was doing is probably going to outpace anything that I would have done by making him sit there with that book. So just wanted to share that real quick. We have no need for executive session tonight, and so I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
Do you want to talk about the superintendent's evaluation?
We'll do, we'll just look at calendars real quick afterwards. So just, board, don't be for a second. Motion. Okay, so Alexander?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mr. Vambari?
Yes.
Mr. Anshfam?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.